Welcome to today's virtual Cabinet meeting. Before we start the formal business of the meeting, I must remind you that the audio of this meeting has been live broadcast on the Council's website and the video of the meeting will be published afterwards. I'd like to first introduce the officers supporting today's meeting and the councillors in attendance will be introduced shortly. We have Mike Hill, our Chief Executive, Alison Ball, Director of Corporate Resources, Francesca Wiley, Head of Governance and Customer Services, Joelle Davies, Head of Regeneration and Welfare, and finally myself, Caroline McCleary, Democratic Services Officer and Clerk of the Meeting. Thank you. If I could just hand over now to the Chair, councillor John Clark. Thank you.
Thanks Caroline. So a call for apologies for absence. None. See everybody's there. So next item is Declaration of Interests. I'm declared there. And we'll move on to item four, which is a Prudential Code 2021 and Quarterly Treasury Activity Report for quarter ended 31st of December 2020. And I'll bring in Alison there.
Yes, thank you Leader. Yes, this is our usual quarterly monitor report on the position against the Prudential Code and Treasury indicators as approved by a full council in March of last year. So starting as usual with an update on the economy and interest rates. As previously reported, the economic update is dominated by the impact of COVID-19 related uncertainties. It is fair to say that even in the most stable of economic conditions, economic forecasting is a challenge, with frequently many differing views from leading economists. Against the backdrop of COVID-19, it seems almost as soon as we've had one economic update, then it's out of date and we're receiving another one. And I think this is probably clear to you in the report that you see today. So during quarter two, the economy was showing signs of a sharper recovery than expected, with a bounce back over the summer translating into improved forecasts for GDP and a downward revision in the expected unemployment rate. But this was followed by a second wave of the virus, with the national lockdowns once again contracting GDP and depressing forecasts. This then has also been followed by the approval of the vaccines, and once again boosting confidence that life could largely return to normal in the second half of 2021, with the hospitality sector hoping to return to pre-pandemic levels to help bring down the unemployment rate. But with effective vaccines, this radically improves the economic outlook, which may allow GDP to rise back to pre-pandemic levels late in 2022, a year earlier than expected, meaning that the employment rate might peak at 7% in 2021 rather than 9%. With regards to Brexit, the good news during the quarter was the final agreement being reached on the 24th of December, which has eliminated a significant downside risk for the UK economy. That initial agreement does only cover trade, so there is still work to be done in the services sector, which is currently operated on the basis of temporary equivalence until a permanent solution is finalised. So based on those projections for the economy, the Bank of England has kept the bank rate unchanged at 0.1%, with the previously mooted cut into negative territory being ruled out by the governor. An increase is not expected until there is clear evidence that a recovery has taken hold and it's forecast by our Treasury advisers to stay at this level until at least March 2024. So forecasts for borrowing rates now reflect the 1% reduction in P2OB rates following the conclusion of the Treasury's consultation process regarding the restriction of borrowing for commercial returns, which has now been finalised. The details, which I've included in paragraph 2.9 of the report and which I will come back to in a moment to discuss in a bit more detail. Turning first though to our overall Treasury activity during quarter three in paragraph 2.5 of the report. Firstly, I can confirm that all Treasury activity this quarter has been contained within the approved limits for both the Prudential and the Treasury Management indicators of affordability and prudence, with any variances from the initial estimates arising primarily due to the changes in schemes in the capital programme. With regard to investments, as always, the security of money takes priority over yield and as cash investment rates are now very low with some deposit accounts and the DMO now sometimes offering negative rates for shorter periods, our investment rates now stand at 0.7%. So returns very low, but they do still outperform our benchmark rates, which are currently averaging a negative 0.06 for the three-month rate. So our performance is helped by the £1 million investment in the Property Fund. And whilst returns may be lower this year than they have been previously, they are improving and the capital value is now starting to show signs of recovery from its lowest level in August, following the impact of COVID-19 on the property market. Whilst investment rates are expected to remain low, it is anticipated at the moment that our outturn for interest will be broadly in line with the estimate of £95,000, which is mainly due to cash balances at the beginning of the year being higher than expected as the government has paid cash to us upfront to fund the business grant schemes. With regard to borrowing, I can confirm no borrowing has been undertaken during quarter three, so our borrowing still stands at 9.8 million and I don't anticipate that any more borrowing will be required in quarter four. The Council's current capital programme assumes that we will need to undertake some borrowing this year, which was primarily due to the Commercial Property Investment Programme of £5 million, which members will recall from last quarter that this was put on hold subject to the outcome of the consultation on P2OB lending terms, which sought to restrict local authority borrowing for this type of scheme. And secondly, due to the risks prevailing in the property market due to the economic downturn. As I mentioned earlier, the outcome of the consultation is now known and I can confirm that access to P2OB is now restricted for the funding of investments that are primarily to generate income, known as debt-for-yield activity. That restricted access to P2OB is on a whole-plan basis, which means that even if the council intends to buy investment assets at any point in the plan and to finance them other than by borrowing over alternative sources, alternative funding sources, P2OB will still not lend to us for our normal service and operational requirements. So as part of the new process, I as CFO have got to confirm to government that there is no intention to buy investments that are primarily for yield at any point in the next three years. The quarter three budget report, which is the next item on the agenda, does now propose the withdrawal of the Commercial Property Investment Strategy and the related £5 million Capital Programme item, which is the debt-for-yield activity, in order to protect our access to P2OB for other capital projects. And this proposed withdrawal has been reflected within the Prudential and Treasury indicators that are attached to this report. So I'll leave it there Leader. The recommendations are on page seven and for members to note the report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks Alison. Just before I move on to ask Michael, I forgot to approve the minutes of 10th of December 2020. So they're on pages five to six. I'll move those. Seconded.
Seconded.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. We're up to date now. Michael.
Nothing further to add, John. I think Alison set the case out very clearly in relation to the Prudential Code indicator monitoring and quarterly Treasury activity. The recommendation, as you said, John, is that we note the report together with the Treasury Activity Report for quarter three, Appendix One, and the Prudential and Treasury Indicator Monitoring for quarter three, Appendix Two. I've nothing further to add on this report, John.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just to add, you know, to thank Alison and the staff, because she tells, and I hate using this word, but it is a tsunami of change, which has been thrown at you every day, you know, right the way through and the rest of the, not just our authority but other authorities as well. And I think it shows the professionalism of the officers that we've got and across the country through local authorities. You know, that strength is there and you can feel comfortable that you're in safe hands. So that's been moved. It has been seconded. Can we agree the recommendation?
Agreed.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to item five, which we're still with Alison, that's Quarterly Budget Monitoring and Firement Report, Quarter Three.
Okay, yeah, thank you Leader. Yes, our usual budget monitoring, presenting the projected outturn for both revenue and capital budgets for this year, together with proposed budget amendments. And this quarter also includes the proposal to withdraw the Commercial Property Investment Strategy for referrals to full council for approval. If I may Leader, I'll take the reporter's red and just focus on key highlights for Cabinet. So starting with revenue on page 30, the table that shows that the revenue outturn is projected to be in line with the approved budget of 11.6 million, including an overall contribution from earmarked reserves of just under 2.3 million. Members will recall approving up to quarter two the use of just over £320,000 earmarked reserves to ensure that the budget was maintained at its maximum due to the forecast budgetary impact of COVID-19. Whilst the latest position at quarter three presents a worse position in terms of additional COVID-19 pressures of another £142,000, which is mainly due to the lockdown restrictions impacting on our leisure income, this has been contained within savings identified across portfolios. Now whilst we are now progressing to year-end and COVID impacts are becoming much firmer, it is still fair to say that the financial impact is still not fully clear and we will continue to monitor that closely. It is probably worth noting that the collection for note losses, which will impact from next financial year, that are detailed in paragraph 2.23 of the report, have been very recently updated for next year as part of next year's budget process since this report has been published. So looking at the latest business rates forecasting and taking that in line with the provisional methodology for the Collection Fund Income Compensation Scheme, which was announced by government in the provisional local finance settlement, these are now expected to be worse than that included in the report by another, a further £122,000. So bringing the total 2021 COVID-related impacts to £595,000. That estimate will be included in the report's budget cabinet in February. The full list of firements proposed for approval are in Appendix One. And in addition to COVID-related impacts, this includes further deferrals on the efficiency programme totaling just under £55,000. So the total deferrals for the year now stand at just under £400,000, which have been partly offset by the application of the risk provision that we had this year of £100,000. We did that in quarter one. The whole efficiency programme has been reviewed as part of the budget process for next year and any new efficiency proposals required to replace current projects at high risk of non-delivery. For example, the Commercial Property Investment Income will be reported for Cabinet consideration in February. So turning now to the capital programme at paragraph 2.4. Total amendments proposed for approvals, the reduction of just under £6.3 million and the schemes are listed in full in the table. As I've already said, the largest amendment is the proposed withdrawal from the programme of the £5 million Commercial Property Investment Project, with the majority of the remainder of the schemes being proposed for deferral to the next financial year and the reasons are detailed in the report. Many of those schemes are expected to commence during this financial year. For example, Arnold Market are just expected to move to completion in the new year. So lots of those projects are underway. So just turning now to the proposal to withdraw the Commercial Property Investment Strategy and associated capital budget as detailed in paragraph 2.7 of the report. I have already described in the previous item on the agenda the government's decision to no longer allow councils to borrow money from the P2OB to purchase commercial property if the aim is to generate an income stream. And in the event that a council does so, they will remove our access to P2OB on a whole-plan basis. So our current Commercial Property Investment Strategy does make it clear in its objectives that it's there to acquire property that provides a return or a yield and that the council will only undertake this, be able to undertake the investment if borrowing is available. So it's therefore impossible to conclude that the CPIS-related investments are anything other than debt-for-yield investments. So in light of the government decision, this will preclude the council from accessing any P2OB borrowing at all if we were to proceed with that strategy. In addition to that issue, the COVID-19 pandemic has certainly emphasised for us the risks of property investment and the ease with which councils can expose themselves to unacceptable levels of risks, with some councils suffering some substantial losses which do inevitably end up falling to the taxpayer to fund when things like that go wrong. So the current economic conditions don't make commercial property investment a prudent option for us at the moment. So it is therefore proposed that Cabinet support the withdrawal of the Commercial Property Investment Strategy at this time and refer it to council for approval. So Leader, the recommendations are on page 29 and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I mean, I still, I think Alison touched on in the presentation of the report, the striking thing in 2.1 of the report obviously makes it clear that now in quarter three, those additional pressures that there continue to be from COVID in terms of the £142,400 that's earmarked, I think anybody who thinks, you know, the impact of this virus economically, set aside the health impacts of the virus, it is over, I think is on cloud nine. And of course, we welcome the support we've had from government. We're not churlish about that. But I think it is fair to say from these figures that that support still hasn't been enough. And there obviously is still serious concern about loss of income in relation to our leisure centres and other services like that, which obviously the revenue budget, you know, does rely on. They're a key part of our budget. So that's highlighted there by Alison. I think the proposed course of action in relation to the commercial portfolio, commercial activity makes eminent sense given the decisions and further restrictions that have been put in place by the national government for understandable reasons. We certainly weren't one of those councils that was going buying hotels in Edinburgh and other places. But certainly there were some councils, I think that it's fair to say, were probably leaving themselves a little bit exposed. But I suppose on the flip side of the coin, you know, they were being encouraged to do that because there was a time, I can remember, where government ministers were telling us that we had to be more commercial. And as revenue support grant was reducing, there was a need to be more commercial and find other ways of bringing in income streams. So it seems almost, John, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. But I think we've always taken with the assistance of Alison and the excellent finance team that we've got here at the council, a cautionary approach to taxpayers' money. Yes, taking risks where they think, we think there's a good reason and good evidence and a business case to take a degree of risk, but not taking risk for risk's sake. And I think that's proven dividends. Obviously concerns in what Alison raises about potentially expected worsening position in terms of the collection fund than that which we might have anticipated from the impact of COVID just shows the ongoing impact and tail of this virus, John, economically for our own community and for the country. So, you know, you've been talking, John, with the district councils network. I know that councillor Wheeler has been feeding into that in terms of the government needing to just do a little bit more to support councils that have kept leisure services in-house. And it would be really appreciated if the government could listen to those arguments being made because we have kept services in-house. I think we've got a good leisure provision, a good leisure service here in Gedlin. And it seems slightly unfair that those that have outsourced seem to be having access to monies and funding that we're not able to access. So we're almost being penalised for having kept services in-house under the trusted banner of the council. But Alison set out the recommendations. I'd just echo what you said earlier Leader, which is a thank you to Alison and a team who as well as having to write reports like this, to be frank, which take time and then themselves, actually are also trying to manage all sorts of different pressures flying at them in terms of administering the government's business support schemes. And it does sometimes feel, John, like the national state feels that local government is the kind of business delivery arm of the central government. And we're not, you know, we have our own job to do as well. We are separate and independent to central government. Of course, we're here to support the national effort, but we aren't just a delivery arm for central government. We've got some really crucial and important services that we have to deliver ourselves. And so I'd just add to a thanks to the finance team and thanks to all of our staff, John, who I think are really under the pressure at the moment right across the council, doing all the stuff over and above their ordinary job to make sure that the most vulnerable people in our community and our businesses are protected. And, you know, you'd expect me to say this as Deputy Leader of the council, but the feedback I get from residents by and large, you know, of course, we've not got everything perfect, has been that the response by Gedlin Borough Council to this pandemic has been very good. And that in no small part is down to the dedication and compassion and willingness to go the extra mile of our staff. So I think this is a very good report. I think it highlights the risks. It sets out very clearly the ongoing impact of COVID. It takes the necessary and proposes the necessary action, particularly in relation to the commercial portfolio. And I'd endorse the report and thank Alison for what is a very clear report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any hands raised anywhere? No? I know you've got loads to do, Alison, but is there any way of projecting, say 18 months or two years down the line on this if we're still stuck? Because I don't think the COVID things are going to go away.
No, I think that's true Leader. I think we are obviously forecasting into next year for the budget report that's going to come to Cabinet next month. It's still next month, yeah. And actually, our forecast for reductions in leisure income is currently sitting at about just over a million pounds, with a compensation scheme currently only promised for the first three months of the year. So they're only covering about £250,000 of that income loss. And they have given us another, just over half a million to cover expenditure pressures. But so that together doesn't cover our income losses and certainly doesn't give us anything extra to cover expenditure pressures. And at the moment, I'm not building any additional expenditure budgets in to offset other than the losses of leisure income. And I think that's just something that we're going to have to be really careful of next year as we move through. So lots, yeah, still lots of uncertainty in next year, but that will all come through in the budget report for February.
Thankfully, last night, that motion went through, you know, unanimous, a cross-party went through to the government. So hold that breath, not for too long I hope, because it's Monday or Tuesday when the settlement comes up.
Can't be too much longer.
Can't be surely. But as we'll be into the next year, won't we? But yeah, so as we know, we're going with this because it is difficult. It's difficult for you to budget for us and we're trying to hold the reins back on the different things that we want to do. And as you say, you know, that property one, well, we'll just have to go ahead with it. But I think we've been sensible in that property management. It makes sense at this moment just to pull back on it. So thanks again to everyone. We've got the recommendation which is on page 29, so I'll move that.
Seconded.
Seconded.
And we're agreed, yeah.
Agreed.
So we're moving on. And Mike, is this you on the quarter plan?
Yes, thank you Leader. This report sets out performance data for the council at the end of quarter three, which takes us up to the period ending December 2020. So not much to reveal on the actions, but you see the pie chart there. So starting with those actions, there are 96 actions contained within the Gedlin Plan. And bearing in mind, the Gedlin Plan is for a period of three years. Hence, the chart is showing that only 12 are complete. Well, that is on target. That is what we expected in year one, with the other 84 of the actions either started in progress or being planned to start in years two and three of the plan. So at the moment, we don't anticipate any problems with delivery, pending any disasters around the COVID impacts, of course. So just moving on to the performance indicators, there are 32. Again, in the pie chart, 11 are on target. Three are slightly below target and unfortunately, six have missed the target this time around. There are two indicators for which we have no data in this quarter, which is to do with the waste. And the reason for that is we get the information from the county council. Well, that's been very slow in coming this quarter, so we haven't had the information to print before today. And then there are 10 final indicators which are for tracking purposes only. So not wanting to go into too much detail Leader, but the report at paragraph 2.4 sets out some examples of positive performance. And these are in the areas of removal of fly tipping, housing benefit processing, telephone call answering, the number of subscribers to keep you posted, bringing back empty homes back into use, good news around delivery of affordable homes and the quality of food premises in the borough. So they're all detailed in the report. I think undoubtedly, we've already mentioned in the budget report the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on our performance in some areas. And as we've already just reported, this has resulted in us slightly missing some of the targets. These are explained in further detail in the report at paragraph 2.6, mainly around the provision of new and affordable homes. But it is pleasing to note that a further 62 homes have been built this quarter and we hope that continues into the future. The time spent in temporary accommodation is a big issue. Cabinet received a report, an update report in December on temporary accommodation and we are hopeful, well, we are expecting to bring a further report on temporary accommodation and our solutions to it to the February Cabinet. And then the final one there is the, of course, the workforce sickness levels, which again have been affected by the pandemic as we see it at the moment. So in terms of achievements, these are discussed in detail at Appendix One. But some of the most important ones have been highlighted in paragraph 2.7 of the report. And just to pick out four Leader, clearly the Feeding Gedlin campaign was absolutely amazing. It raised over £10,000 and we used it to, you know, real good effect and managed to deliver over 600 festive food parcels to vulnerable families. And we're all very proud of that fact. Alison's just mentioned it, but the administration of 12 different business grant streams. As we stand today, that's probably increasing when we get the next tranche of business grants. But the team have administered 12 business grant streams and they total £11 million, which is again a huge figure and a massive amount of grant payments to individual businesses. Pleased to see the recognition of our Parks and Street Care team by APSC. We do work well with APSC. We have an incredible task team down there. We always try and, well, we do support the APSC programme and we always apply for these awards. And I'm really, really pleased that we have been recognised this time around. And finally, I know it's a favourite of all of ours, but I was really pleased to see the completion of the new outdoor seating area, of course, at the Gedlin Country Park, which is an amazing feat of engineering. And as I say, I can't wait to put it to use when the barriers come down. So I'll stop there Leader and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
On the famous mute, when it goes off, there we are. Any hands arriving there? Moving on. Just looking at the, on page 68, business grants. And when you read that paragraph, what a lot of work is behind that paragraph, Alison, for team and Andrew Solly and all the other people like that, to deal with 12 different grants and to a value of £11 million. And I wouldn't say it's seamless, but it seemed to be seamless for my members. You know, we get regular updates and I don't think, certainly, I have not had any complaints or if I had, it's about the way the government have handled it. Then I've asked the questions in-house and they've been solved and sorted and assisted lots and lots of businesses. There will be people we miss, but I think it's worth pointing that out that 12 different grants and thrown at you from all different angles. So I'm really pleased to see how the staff have handled that. The bit, Mike, on, where was it? The, what's it now? The sickness. How are we, we've got the normal sickness. We've got unfortunately, long-term sickness. But have we got a separate column now for COVID sickness? Just to give us some idea on the effect on the organisation.
Yes Leader, we do record that internally. I can share that with you at some point if you wish.
Just to say, it's just interesting because, you know, we've got a decreasing band of people through restructure or whatever and people move in. But it'd be interesting to see because we are putting and looking at the welfare of other people because we're putting a lot on a smaller band, you know, or a smaller group. So we do have to keep an eye on what we're doing there.
I can check that Leader.
Yeah, thank you. That's, you know, that really helps. There's so much stuff in here, you know, I'm glad to see that the seniors council reconvened on the 11th of December. Gary, have you got anything to add on that one?
Yeah.
I'll bring David in then.
Yeah, it was a different meeting, shall we say.
Yeah.
It was enjoyable. It was nice to see everybody back together and it was all joining in with the modern technology, which was rather worried about at first, but I think it came across very well and it's something that we are planning to do again in the near future to keep those informed. But it did give them chance to explain what they was doing, what But it did give them chance to explain what they was doing, what groups, what their needs are. Because the only thing that I am worried about is the mental health of the older ones, if there wasn't going out and they've lost that contact and moving forward. But I think we've addressed some of it. And and the the new system that they're on at the moment for the seniors council is very good and they're all joining in with their capabilities. And that when I was talking to them last week, or some of them last week, they've all got more of the hang of it and can follow the new system. So that's just Gedlin again being on in the front and the staff being at the front again. Thank you.
Thank you. I shall go through it all. But Henry, where are we with the youth council now? Because I I'm conscious and Sandrick keeps saying to me, you know, Mohammed is the youth mayor, we've we've not been able to utilise him. Are they are they?
Youth council.
Youth council sits with.
It's in my portfolio. The youth councillor meeting.
Hang on a minute.
It sits with me, John, it's in my portfolio.
It's in yours, is it? Sorry. I did see a hand and you can answer it then. Where are you? You're up there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here. To say the youth councillor meeting, we're meeting on a regular basis, John. We've got the next meeting coming up. Mohammed's there. I think he's done some engagements over the Christmas. He did the Christmas tree light turn on. He's very involved. We've got a, you know, full programme. They've been involved in the consultation, helping us with the consultation document, pulling that together that's gone out to see young people. They've fed back on the mental health consultation that was done within the county. And, you know, I mean, they're brilliant with technology, so they're very, they're very good meetings online. And we're, you know, they're they're, we've got the next one coming up in the next month.
Thank you. And hand a miss, which David, because you've gone on the bottom row, so I missed that. Sorry.
Thank you, Leader. I I just wanted to to echo the the comments about how how well the council's been doing this last this last year, keeping things going in in all in all the circumstances. You know, we should be, good examples here of people who've who've kept the service going despite the difficulties, who've adapted the services, whether it's things like the different way of doing the Pride of Gedlin awards and the different ways of doing Christmas stuff, and who've innovated, you know, things that we that certainly when the plan was put together, we wouldn't have anticipated having to do the humanitarian aid or or the work that the finance team have done in terms of business. I'd like to just draw one out on page seventy three, the the closure order for the mustard seed, which was something that we had anticipated and it required creative thinking between the police, the public protection service and and legal services. And I just want to commend them all for for that, for their efforts in that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? There are lots of things there we can look at, but you know, there's so many things that that are going on, you know, against the background of the Covid and everything else. So anyway, if there's no more comments, the recommendation is on page sixty one, that the progress against the improvement actions and performance indicators twenty twenty, twenty three, Gedlin Plan for the end of twenty twenty one, quarter three being noted. So we're noting that. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. And next, we've got head of regeneration welfare, Joelle. If she's here, if not, Alison's coming off the sub bench.
I think I can see you there in the room.
Yep, I'm I'm here, Leader. And I've also, Paul Whitworth's here. So from Alison's here, from the strategic housing point, and Paul's here from an operational point of view as well, Leader. And so in terms of this this report, officers are seeking approval to revise the council's housing allocation policy following two rounds of public consultation. The amended policies included an appendix A for for your reference. As you'll be aware, the current allocation policy was approved in two thousand and thirteen and describes the mechanisms by which the council assesses applicants to join the housing register. This will enable the housing register provider to allocate properties from a shortlist of potential applicants. Currently, we've got around six hundred and thirty people on the waiting list, but this is a fluid process, so they come and go. In a usual year, there are only around two hundred general needs houses available for allocation on the waiting list. So previously, Cabinet have approved officers to go out for consultation on a variety of proposed amendments. And if you remember when we sought approval, this is all linked to officers trying to make sure that that waiting list is fit for purpose, but also make sure that it meets the needs of the people of Gedlin. So just in terms of some of those reasons why we are looking at amending the policy, we wanted to make sure that we're not raising applicants' expectations, that they're not unrealistic. As we, as I've mentioned, we only have a limited number of houses available. And as I've mentioned, the demand far exceeds the supply. We also want to make sure that we we try and reduce the amount of abortive calls that the team get. So if 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 people are on the waiting list, don't stand a realistic chance of getting a house. We want to try and make sure that we are more upfront with that and, as I say, making sure that they don't have unrealistic expectations. There is also a need to make further amendments in light of new legislation and recent guidance that's come out. So when officers sought approval for the proposed amendments and to go out for consultation, we we did go into quite a lot of detail in terms of the proposed changes. But what I'd like to do today is just to recap on those main changes, but also to feedback in terms of the public consultation that was taking place. So Cabinet approved in October two thousand and nineteen to be able to do a twelve week public consultation on these proposed amendments. And during that time, we engaged with a wide range of partners, including registered providers with stock in the borough, key statutory and voluntary agencies, but also, of course, the current applicants on the waiting list. We did also make sure it was available to anybody else who wanted to comment, and there were a variety of methods that we used, including an online survey for people to be able to access. There were a number of other stakeholder meetings that were attended by officers to explain the proposed changes and to give people the opportunity to comment. And we were really pleased with the feedback that we received. During the time, we actually received sixty nine comments and they were generally supportive. The details of the consultation is included in appendix B. But what I'd like to do is just summarise, as I say, the key changes and the feedback that we had from the consultation. So in terms of homeless applicants, they're currently placed in band two for six weeks and can place bids on properties they're interested in. If they're not matched for a property within this time, they are moved up to band one auto bids. Now, this was presenting significant difficulties and was resulting in an increase of use of temporary accommodation. So officers proposed to amend the policy so that homeless applicants are placed in band one straight away and on auto bids, making sure they have the highest priority for rehousing and also to make sure from our point of view, we can accommodate them as quickly as possible. In terms of the consultation feedback, ninety one per cent of respondents agreed with this proposed change. Moving on, the second big change that we were proposing is the band one auto bids. Now, band one is awarded to those applicants in the greatest need. And the proposal that we put forward was to place such applicants on auto bid. The reason for this is that auto bids are determined by the property size as opposed to the property type. Now, whilst it's understandable that applicants may want to hold out for a house, as the priority is to ensure they have suitable accommodation, the the proposed change was to speed up the allocation process, preventing applicants holding out for specific properties, but to refocus this band to rapid rehousing and not about having access to the first pick of the best properties. In terms of the consultation responses, eighty two per cent of respondents agreed to these changes. The third key change was increasing the local connection. So currently, applicants need to demonstrate that they have lived or worked in the borough for a minimum of a year to be able to join the housing register. Now, this creates a large number of potential applicants, and the focus was to make sure that local people have access to the limited supply of social housing available and to make sure that people on the waiting list have more realistic expectations. After reviewing the options and what other neighbouring authorities were doing, officers had sought approval to consult on increasing that local connection from one year to three years. So following Cabinet approval of that, we went out for consultation and eighty nine per cent of the respondents agreed to this change. In terms of other changes, the draft policy identified certain situations where applicants could be removed from the housing register. For example, when they're not actively bidding or they deliberately provided misleading or inaccurate information or have behaved in a way that would make them illegible to be on the council register, such as antisocial behaviour. And again, in terms of the feedback, overwhelming support for this, ninety four per cent of respondents agreed and with the proposed changes. There were a series of other small amendments to the policy, which we also consulted on and sought approval for. They're detailed in appendix C. But again, in terms of consultation feedback that we received, very, very positive in terms of terms of the comments. Now, there were some negative comments, some of them we have addressed in terms of either text changes or or slight emphasis changes. But actually, as I say, largely supportive of what we were proposing. Now, following on from this consultation and the proposed changes, a further matter was identified during internal consultation with officers. So essentially, when officers sent checked the revised policy, we just had a final look to make sure it was fit for purpose. And actually, there was a further matter identified. Now, it was a historic matter linked to the the fact that there were a criteria in the policy linked to people who are over fifty five and who did not have a local connection but were allowed to bid for sheltered accommodation. Now, this criteria was put back, put in in direct response to the fact that at that point in time, there was very low demand for sheltered properties and therefore high void rates. So at the request of the housing providers at the time, we added the criteria to try to make sure that these sheltered accommodation properties were were used. As these properties have are now more desirable, so largely down to improvements in their condition, but also just an increase in demand for them, officers felt that it was required to remove this criteria from the policy and to make it in line with the other local connection policy to make sure that people could demonstrate they did have that local connection. So as that was identified, we we felt that 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 needed to go under consultation. So we sought portfolio holder approval to do a further four week consultation to remove this criteria from the allocation policy. And that ran from through September and October last year. As part of that consultation, we received twenty responses, which, again, we were pleased with. And they were broadly in favour with the proposed changes and could understand the reasoning behind that. And then the need to prioritise those with a local connection for their limited supply of sheltered accommodation. So overall, very positive feedback from the consultation. So officers have obviously put the report together with a recommendation to approve the amendments and to put the policy in place. Now, just in terms of practicalities, if it was approved today, the new policy wouldn't be implemented straight away, as we do need to update the software, which is used for maintaining the housing register. And that's just going to take a little bit of time. So what we're proposing is as soon as we can get that work done, we'll have the register, the updated policy, and we're aiming for the first of April to be able to do that. After this time, those who are no longer eligible will be notified that they are removed at the earliest opportunity. And we're working with our communications team in terms of the best way of being able to do that. There is an annual review, which each each applicant does go through, and we will be looking at trying to prioritise notifying notifying those that are no longer eligible for the on the register that that's the case. Just one final point I want to make, because obviously, we are making proposed changes, which would have an impact on people and and residents. So we have undertaken an equality impact assessment to make sure that we've considered all the implications of the policy changes, and that is shown in appendix E. I just wanted to flag up that just due to the nature of the changes proposed, there are some identified positive impacts, for example, to applicants who are pregnant or have children and, for example, armed force personnel, whilst there are others that have been negatively impacted. So again, those that are over fifty five without a local connection, applying for sheltered accommodation, wouldn't be wouldn't be eligible anymore. So we have taken that into account and that has been part of our decision making process. But I think from from the discussions we've had and from the consultation feedback, it's been very much about trying to make sure that the limited supply of social housing we have is being prioritised for those greatest in need and for local for local people first. So, Leader, the recommendation is that officers are seeking Cabinet approval to amend the council's housing allocation policy, as I've just described and as detailed in the report.
Thanks, Joelle. And I thought Covid grants was difficult. This sounds another fightfield to sort out. Is Paul want to, before I bring Viv in? Does Paul want to come in?
No, see, I'm I've been on the process throughout, Leader, so I'm quite happy with the way Joelle's explained that. We brought up some of the issues in in past meetings, so I'm sure you're aware of of the need and of the suggestions that we're putting forward.
Thank you. I've got Viv, and then I've got Michael.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. And just what's the implication in terms of the new around women fleeing domestic violence in terms of our duty to house women and children that are fleeing, that can't get into refuges and that need secure housing?
And Leader, this is exactly why Alison's on the call. So can you answer that for me, Ali?
Would that hand up? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, the lead of that group is always been addressed through the homeless legislation and the and the priority work that we do there. So obviously, there have been issues around refugees, particularly during the Covid period. And Paul wants to comment on and and nationally, sadly, we did hear almost a fifty per cent increase in domestic violence. That is something that we are acutely aware of. And a further complication related to Covid, obviously, is that a lot of the refuge facilities have shared facilities. So for a while, the county did open up additional resources in the north and south of the county to try and help with that. But that isn't a change in the new allocations policy because that was already there because of the legislation that underpins it. I don't know, Paul wants to make a comment operationally?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't make any difference at all. We still have a duty to pick those people up and they don't need a local connection necessarily. So, yeah, no change from my perspective, so they should be fully covered.
So where would they sit then in terms of your new three bands?
They would still be in band, they'd potentially still be in band one.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael.
Yeah, I mean, an excellent piece of work by officers, but I think, you know, it should just be said upfront. It saddens me that we even have to receive this report to Cabinet. And frankly, the reason we have to receive this report to Cabinet, you know, in a nutshell, is that demand outstrips supply and demand outstrips supply because of a few things. One, I think, a retrograde decision by this council to remove its its housing stock and give it out to Gedlin Homes. And and I think in the in the fullness of time, reflecting back now, that was a bad decision, partly driven by changes in government legislation, but also because not enough's being done to equip and enable councils to provide the the supply that's needed to meet demand. So, you know, the the driver behind this report is not the council trying to do good stuff. The driver behind this report is, exactly as Joelle said upfront in the report, there are there are too many people on our waiting list who we're not able to support. And it just saddens me that we're having to change our policy because of that, because what sits behind this is is real people with real lives who essentially now are not going to be able to get support. That's the corollary of the changes that we're going to be making. And I think there's no point in trying to to sugarcoat it, you know, that there is going to be an impact on people, on 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 real people, whether they've got a local connection or not, they are going to be impacted. And I just think it's worth acknowledging that upfront. I I'm sad about the fact that we, you know, we are making decisions on the back of only sixty nine and twenty responses respectively. It's not a lot of people responding to the consultation and that's no fault of the officers. You know, but it's sixty nine comments and and twenty comments back in terms of the two separate twelve week and then subsequent consultation that Joelle referred to. And just a few things. If 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 either Alison or Paul could just talk me through the practically the difference between somebody who applies through homelessness application and gets the duty and therefore goes into band one, satisfies the duty in terms of location and legislation and goes into band one, and those who don't, that then go down into band three, just practically talk me through what what the difference would be? How does somebody find themselves into that that duty in terms of legislation? How does somebody not? Because clearly, those who don't and go into band three, yes, I can see there's a there's a mechanism in here that gives them that extra six months, effectively backdates their their application and gives them some, if you like, breathing time. Beneficial preference, I think, is the the phrase you use. And I'd just like to understand the practicalities of of that, because we do get a lot of, and certainly I've had a lot of homelessness pieces of casework in 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 recent weeks, where there's been difficulty in supporting them because of the reasons that have been set out in the report. The local connection criteria, I have to say, and I'm just going to put, you know, put it out there, I I'm worried about. About, you know, I I don't really buy the argument about, well, we're moving in line to to neighbouring authorities. We're not neighbouring authorities, we're Gedlin and we're here to look after our residents. And there will be an impact moving from one to three years. I'd have preferred us to stay at the year or two years, but I do understand some of the arguments that have been set out, but I am concerned about that. But I do understand some of the arguments that have been set out, but I am concerned about that. Likewise, by explanation from Alison or Paul, I'd just like to understand what this additional review that can take place over and above the annual, annual review that's referred to in two point seven, the report. So there's additional scope for further reviews. Now, what effectively does that mean in practice? Is it, is it dipping in and out of these lists, you know, every month? And, and, and trying to shun people out if they're not eligible? What does that actually mean? Because actually, that's giving, that's giving officers a lot of scope. If I just read the words that before is on the page, I'd just like to be reassured about practically what that, what that means. And then final point, Leader, is just, I guess, just to recognise, you know, whilst I understand the argument that's being made about fifty-five-year-olds who have no connection and the sheltered accommodation and the change in circumstances and when the facts change, you change your position. And, and Joelle set that out, I think neatly in the, in introducing the report. There will be an impact and I suspect we're going to get some fifty-five-year-olds contacting us as Cabinet members saying, I've been impacted by this change. So if people could just pick up those points, it would be very much appreciated. But I, I think we received this report with sadness really as a cabinet, you know, that is not a reflection on the officers. I think the officers have done an absolutely superb job and do do a superb job with the tools that they have in front of them. But it just saddens me that we even have to have this report before us because I think it's a very poor reflection of a country that views itself as the, the fifth richest country in the world that cannot support people to be, to essentially have a, you know, a roof over their head. And these are people who are in desperate need, many of them.
Thanks, Michael. Just before I bring Jenny in, Joelle, do you want to come back there or Paul?
Yep. So I'll try and cover all of the points in turn while I let Ally and Paul work out the answers to some of them. But in terms of feedback, councillor Payne, in terms of why we're doing it, I mean, you know, I appreciate that you're saying it's the situation we're in. And I think all we're trying to do as officers is to try to make sure that we prioritise the, the number of houses we have for, for people in the greatest need and, and those that have the, the local connection. And so, you know, I appreciate the, the comments you've made there and, and, you know, it is sad that we're in the, the position we are in. But as I say, as officers, we're just trying to make sure that this, the list is as fit for purpose as possible and also not raising unrealistic expectations. Obviously, there is an opportunity for, for changes to happen in the future. So if we suddenly had an influx of social housing, we can look at changing it again. And I know that colleagues are working to try and secure as much in terms of affordable housing as we can. And so what I'm going to try and do is go through the various points and try and steer in terms of who's answering what. So Paul, in terms of the homeless applicants and the process between band one and two, can you just respond to that, please?
Yeah, band one and three. So obviously, the key issue here is, is the priority. So if, if, as we know, priority would cover people with families, children, disabilities, your domestic violence cases and pensioners, people like that. So obviously, they're going to go straight into band one. Predominantly, your single people are the ones that are going to be going into, into band three as councillor Payne has outlined. And obviously, what we're, we're trying to do for those people, because they are still homeless, is that, as you've alluded to, we will backdate their application six months, which will give them a higher priority than other band threes. But obviously, in realistic terms, being in band three will, will still make it very difficult for them to secure properties simply because of the high numbers already in bands one and, ones one and two. But that is the subtle difference. It's, it's down to that, that the band one cases will be classed as a priority case, whereas the band threes, band threes are not unless Alison wants to add any, anything else to that.
Paul, just, Paul, just before Alison comes in, so if I compare the change to where we are at the moment, is there, you know, those categories you've just referred to, the current allocation policy we have essentially allows a degree of subjectivity for our housing officers. So it says that homelessness is kind of priority banned, but there's then a, there's then a subjective kind of view that our professional officers give, you know, so we had, we had a case with this recently. So those categories you've just referred to in terms of satisfying the duty, are they set out in black and white in the legislation or the guidance? Or, or is there still an element of subjectivity around this? Because I guess that's where, where I've got a degree of concern. If somebody gets put into band three, but is a homeless application and it's done off the back of subjectivity by officers, A, that leaves our officers open to, to kind of criticism and, and quite isolated in terms of then people coming to elected members and saying, well, why has this view been taken? If it's done off the back of kind of black and white guidance and these are the people who go into band one, these are the people who go into band three, I just want to understand that practically because these are the sorts of, these are the sorts of practical issues we're going to get as elected, elected members.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose the only black and white, it's, it's obviously quite easy. If you've got children, that's black and white. And if you're a pensioner, that's black and white and so, so forth. The issue predominantly for me always surrounds mental health and things like that because obviously, we're not, we're not medical practitioners. So we are relying on the supporting evidence that the individual provides and obviously, the, the, the quality of that evidence at the end of the day. But you're absolutely right, you know, we still have to make a judgement based on, on that evidence. And you'd hope that we'd obviously make a, a, an effort to have seen some kind of consistent approach to that. But obviously, you know, people's circumstances do differ. But yes, that's the only element. I would suggest that there is a grounds for officers to make a, a specific judgement. The others are quite clear, clear cut. You either are or not a pensioner or you're not got children. Obviously, they'd still have to provide evidence in support of that. But yeah, the, the mental health issue is always one that's going to be a little bit of a grey, grey area of the other categories that I've, I've outlined already.
Okay, Ally, do you want to come in? And then also, could you then follow on and answer the question just about the local connection as well and try and link, link on? Thank you.
I suppose to give some comfort, and it is a very valid point that's been raised, is that obviously, when anyone applies to either join the register or makes their homeless application, they have a statutory right to request that that's reviewed. And then ultimately, they can take us for a judicial review as well. So there is, and, and that would also apply to anybody who was removed from the waiting list as part of, you know, the review that happened there. But I think it's also important to notice as well that the housing needs team do prepare a personal housing plan with every individual. So if they don't hit all the defined triggers to get in band one, I know that the staff will be also giving them advice about private rented, about some of the discount for sale and trying to resolve that homelessness in another way. So if they don't tick all the boxes for the homeless legislation, which is very prescriptive, there will still be advice and support available to that person. I know that Paul does an awful lot of work around paying, you know, bonds, guarantees, deposits, using that homeless prevention grant to, to do exactly what it's there for so that we don't even take the homeless claim in the, in the first place. So I think just to offer some, you know, try and offer some comfort and a further expansion on that answer.
Alison, just, just before you deal with the local connection thing, just kind of reflecting back on what you and Paul said. I just think, I mean, the, the team do a superb job and certainly whenever, whenever I've dealt with them, you know, they do, they do show that compassion and that bespoke support you've just referenced. I just think it's worth stating that we need to redouble our efforts to make sure that those who fall in that grey area that Paul refers to in relation to mental health, that we're doing everything as a council. I'm not just talking about the housing needs team now, I'm talking about, you know, some of the customer service people who sometimes talk to people, that we're doing everything so that those people know how they need to present their evidence. Because actually, often what I see is that people who are in that state don't know how to present their evidence and potentially are missing out on being in band one. So I just think there's a, we almost need to just redouble our efforts collectively as an institution to make sure that we're making sure that those people know how to present their evidence, what evidence is needed, get the support to present their evidence so that they don't end up falling in band three instead of band one. But I didn't, the fact that they've not, they've not put their case across in the, the correct or appropriate way. I'm just trying to share practical feedback from the cases I've dealt with because I think we're only going to improve if we, if we reflect on the real live cases that we've been dealing with. And I know the team are dealing with these and I try and speak to the team if ever I'm dealing with a case to try and understand some of the subtleties and nuances. There'll be other Cabinet members and other elected members who get, get these inquiries as well.
Okay, Jo.
Thanks, Leader. Just a comment and a question. Like Michael, I was slightly disappointed by the, the level of response, I have to say. If you look at six hundred and twenty-nine households on the, on the waiting list and sixty responses, and that's without factoring in other stakeholders that were consulted. I, I think it's, I'm not sure whether statistically that's good or bad because I'm not into that sort of thing. And the other one is, you've got a hundred and forty on the over fifty-fives and yet there were only twenty responses. Now, that's a lot of people that are going to be taken off the register when this goes through. And I'm surprised there wasn't more response from them. And I, I think like Michael, we may well be getting some feedback from people on that. The other one is, and I can't find it, but I think I read that people who've had sanctuary measures put in place within twelve months will not be eligible to go on the waiting list. Now, I assume if something very serious happens at that address where those measures have been put in, that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis. Am I right?
Yes, yes, of course. I think, I think the thought with the sanctuary measures, obviously, that's target hardening that's carried out often in consultation with the police or fire service. But obviously, absolutely, if there was a serious incident, then absolutely, they would reapply and Paul and the team would, would reassess them. I think it's just about trying to be clear with people because obviously, that, these, these measures, and these two are between about four and twelve thousand pounds and that's what the person wanted at that time. And I think it's just trying to be clear about how we would assess things. But I mean, the golden rule for, for, for housing always, because often is the art of the grey, is that it is each case on its own merits. And I know Paul spends a lot of time with the team, you know, training them. And obviously, we'll be doing a lot of training with the team as we implement the new allocations policy so that they are, you know, they are supported.
Yeah, that's very reassuring, Alison. Thank you.
So if I could just add in as well, and I'm conscious, councillor Payne, I haven't forgotten some of your other questions. I will, I will loop back to them. But just a point that both councillor Payne and councillor Hollingworth have made about the consultations. We were actually quite pleased with sixty-nine respondents, you know, in terms of the waiting list, there's about six hundred and thirty. I know in terms of the numbers of comments we received, we felt we'd nearly got about ten percent of the waiting list. So actually, you know, I'm not a stats expert either, but we, we were quite pleased with that. And I think actually, the, the types of comments we received as well, it was the kind of the quality that, and that's why the statement we'd made. I mean, obviously, we would have loved a lot more, but actually, we, we, we felt that that was a fair representative kind of feedback. And, and I'm just conscious that there are some outstanding queries from councillor Payne. So Alison, can I come back to you about the local connection justification, please? Sorry.
Yes, of course. And you've absolutely hit the nail on the head. The driver for that was trying to better match supply and demand. And we, and I, and I completely appreciate what you're saying about, you know, about geddling residents. And if you may recall, we had actually put a proposal forward initially for five years, listened to the views of members, reduced it to three. But I think just to maybe set it within, within that context at the city, it's a five-year local connection. And in Jo's hometown, it's actually in Bathmore, a ten-year local connection. So we're, we're absolutely not out of kilter. We're at the more moderate end. But at the end of the day, we are letting people down if we have them on a list and we know we're not, we're not going to house them. You know, and not really to extend the debate, and I'm sure councillor Payne, you're aware of this, because of pilot to extend the right to buy to housing associations, which just baffles me at the time of a national housing crisis. Because we want everything going the other way. We want to protect that social housing. But it, it is difficult, but that's, that's, that's why it's there. But members' views were listened on. We did start with five, moderated that to three to try and get that middle ground for everyone there. Thank you.
Okay. And sorry, Leader, just to carry on with the, the outstanding points from councillor Payne. Councillor Payne had specifically referenced the opportunities for further checks to take place in between annual reviews, which is detailed in paragraph two point seven. Alison, can you respond back to that in terms of what we actually, the practicalities of what that means? And it's definitely not a daily checker or anything like that. But Alison, Alison, can you update on that?
It's very much, I mean, obviously, as members are aware, we do actually charge the housing providers for the allocations process. And it's about making sure that people are on that list, are serious about moving and they're actively bidding. And by being clear about this, it gives Paul and the team the opportunity to look at people who aren't bidding and to contact them and find out why it is. And there's, there's a real value in there. Someone might not be able to bid, they might not understand or equally. And it is just about being really clear with people that if you are on that list, it is about being sadly, in a significant level of housing need and we expect you to be bidding and looking, you know, to move yourself forward. And, and I think, you know, to give members a respectful heads up when we do move to, you know, auto bids more globally, the only people who are in band one who won't be on an auto bid are those people who are downsizing. And obviously, they have the right to tell that for that bungalow on Ruschford Avenue because they're probably giving us a three-bedroom house for it. It's about this move, which Jo very well explained, it's about, it's about property size, not type. Because we know everybody wants a house and a picket fence, but the reality is we've got an awful lot more flats than masonettes. And if you are in extreme housing need by definition, we should, you know, that's, that's where, that's where our offer is going to be. But I think there will be, and I feel for Paul and the team with this, that, you know, they've had recent incidents as well where, you know, brand new two-bedroom flats have been offered and a whole range of reasons are coming back. And this is the eternal problem, I think, of trying to manage the unrealistic sometimes expectations of our, of our customers. So by being as detailed and prescriptive as we can in the allocations policy about how we're going to allocate and the fact that we're going to review and things, I think it's just trying to reinforce that message. Thank you.
And then, sorry, Leader, the final point, I think, from councillor Payne. And maybe you can indicate that I've answered all the questions. But the, the final, the final query was about the over fifty-fives and the, the local connection issue. So in terms of the second round of consultation, and I'm sorry, I didn't make this clear the, the first time round. But actually, what we did is we wrote back out to everybody on that waiting list for a second time, kind of gave them a second bite of the cherry to tell us any other comments. But specifically, we asked questions about the, the removal of people over fifty-five that didn't have that, that local connection. And the, the key thing, and as I mentioned at the beginning, this was because previously, those sheltered accommodation properties were not in demand and we were really struggling to fill them. Now, as there's an increase in demand for these types of properties, the, the feeling is that they should also, the local connection should also apply to them. In terms of the implications, Paul, I don't know whether that's something that you wanted to comment on in terms of how many of these properties we, we do now allocate to people outside of the borough, whether you've got an insight just to share with, so councillor Payne's got an understanding of the practicalities of what we're proposing.
Yeah, I, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. It's not something that we would necessarily record. Obviously, because they're eligible and on the register, it's not really something that we'd, we'd want to flag up. But if, you know, if that information is, is appropriate, we can, we can put that together at later time. That's not a problem at all.
So Leader, can I just confirm, I think I've got all of the queries, councillor Payne. Are you happy that I, we've answered all your queries?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, just, I think it's, John, just to say, I mean, yeah, very helpful, thank you. But just the other thing I want to put on my record is a thanks to Paul and to Ally and the whole team. You're doing a superb job in very, very difficult circumstances. And I think the compassion you've shown, not just in relation to housing needs, but other issues where you've been supporting with the support measures that we've put in place this year is incredibly welcomed. And I ask the questions to try and understand the practicalities of these things, not to in, in any way question the, the professional advice you've given us. And you, you're doing a really good job, so keep up the, the good work. And please pass that on to your, your team as well.
Thank you. Really appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Peter, Peter, do you want to speak?
No, no, I'm okay.
It's sort of flashing on the screen there that you want to speak.
I ain't touched anything yours.
No. Henry's, I've got Henry, but it's been flashing on there with Peter. But anyway, Henry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all the officers involved with this very comprehensive report. It's been really, really difficult in terms of looking at all the important implications of this report. Michael, Michael, sorry, councillor Payne hit the nail on the head. It was a very, I feel, retrograde step for the council to, you know, offload its councillors in, in two thousand and eight. I think that, looking back on it, you know, that, that was a really bad decision. I think it, it's incredibly difficult for us at this point in time because we have a, a social housing crisis. We, we're totally reliant on registered social landlords for our housing supply. But also, in terms of new bills on a lot of the, you know, the, the properties that have been built elsewhere, it's an incredibly small amount of properties that are being made available for, for rent, for, for, for local, you know, for, for people locally. And I think it's incredibly important that we do everything we can to, to try and provide our own housing moving forward, our home council housing moving forward. And also, at the same time, I think it's incredibly important, as has already been made clear, that we protect the most vulnerable residents within our borough. What I don't want to be, I don't want to be in a situation in a few years' time where we're, you know, or even a year's time where we're having to look at this again and having to say, oh, we're going to have to look at a five-year allocation, you know, the, the policy there. I, I really don't want to be in that situation. I think it's vitally important that we do everything we can to, to try and alleviate some of those pressures that we have within the housing, you know, in, in terms of the housing supply. The reason I'm saying that is because I, I know a lot of people that are, you know, in really a very desperate situation often have to look to the private sector. But the, the truth of the matter is, the private sector are now becoming very, you know, the, But the truth of the matter is, the private sector are now becoming very, you know, they're reluctant. Yeah, very selective, very selective, reluctant to provide properties to quite a lot of our vulnerable residents. So I think we need to do everything we can to protect our vulnerable residents. But at the same time, we also need to be putting pressure on those registered social landlords locally to provide more properties at the same time as providing our own as well. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Leader, if I could just add, I mean, I think councillor Weiner, thank you for your comments and for the support for both teams and the work that we've been doing. And I think that the point I just want to make here is that although today we're here to talk about the housing allocation policy, that's only one of the things that the two teams are working on in terms of improving supply for affordable housing. But also, work that we're doing with temporary accommodation, working with developers and housing providers. So there's a whole range of initiatives and work that we are doing. And as today, you know, this is one aspect, but really appreciate the support in terms of the direction of travel that we're working on. And I'm hoping that in the next couple of cabinets, you'll be seeing a bit more of me and some of those other proposals that we're putting forward. So this is just a start of what we're hoping to achieve and really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, just before we move on, can I just, there's obviously something that's going to be a problem here and the people are going to be taking off it. So Rob, are you on, you're on this call, aren't you?
Hi, John, yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we've got the press right for this because it could be quite nasty and quite, sort of, you know, the season things, that we're just throwing people out. And again, it could upset the, you know, mental stability of people, which Michael's already raised. There's a lot of things, so we've got to get the press right. So as long as you're alerted on that, that we, before anything goes out, that it's actually, we double check it, check it again to make sure that we're not falling foul, there's stuff there. And the other Fran, it's just absolutely been legally checked, hasn't it? We're legally sound as far as we can be.
It has, councillor Clark, yes, it was reviewed by legal before it went to SLT and Cabinet.
Thank you. So with that reassurance, and I'll move that to recommendation on page 81, approved and revised housing allocation policy is shown in appendix A, in light of the public consultation undertaken as detailed in this report, I move it. Can I second it? Thank you, Greed?
Greed.
That's carried, thank you. And then we're moving on to the final piece, which is, I made, which is the work plan, which we're asked to note. Is there any comments on that? No comments there, I've just, we'll just note that, okay. So just from the cabinet's perspective, so that a message can go through, not only to the team who have already said thank you and well done, on to the various teams that have been putting forward their representations today and staff. Can we also add into that, so this is actually minuted, the excellent job that the waste collection teams, the Christmas light teams, you know, the Christmas teams have been putting out, we've had some really good comments back about Christmas lights. And also, you know, we've got the teams out there doing the trees and everything else, all under pressure. But particularly highlight the waste collection in the streets, because they've done it exceptionally well. Might not be perfect across the borough, but I think a note from myself and Michael from the cabinet as a whole, I think that that needs landing in the right place, if that can happen, Mike. You there, Mike?
Yes, Leader, appreciated, thank you very much.
Somewhere.
Want to do a bit more, John?
Yeah, and from Peter there. Also, Mike, could you just give us, I'm seeing on the other screen here, this, there's a meeting this afternoon, reflooding. Is there anything to add to that? I understand some houses, is it three or four properties have been flooded across the borough last night?
Nothing to worry about, Leader. Probably if I could ask Fran to comment, she's been on the meeting at lunchtime, Fran?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, councillor Clark, we called an IMT first thing this morning because there'd been about three properties at that point that had contacted customer services. And one property in particular was causing us a bit of concern because we felt there might be vulnerable residents inside. So checks were made, PASC teams went out, phone calls were made by customer services. We reconvened at midday and it wasn't as severe as we'd initially thought. So the waters hadn't breached the property themselves, it was garden flooding. And the other, there was a couple of properties where, again, the water hadn't breached the property itself. It had got into the garage in one of the properties, but not the house. And one of the problem areas where a couple of reports came through was in Woodborough, that this is due to a drain issue which county are resolving. So although we did call the IMT because we were a little bit concerned by the calls, everything's in hand, PASC have done the appropriate checks. And we're having another meeting in the morning in case there's any developments overnight. And we'll be keeping a track on it, but no, there's no, doesn't appear to be any need for real concern at this time.
Thanks for that, because I know there were forecasting, so you could have inches of rain overnight for some, throwing yourself over. Sorry?
I rang Mel this morning and he said everything was, everything was okay. So I was wondering if everything was ticking in the woods this day.
That's what Mel normally says.
Well, I've seen, I've heard what Mel said.
Yeah, but it's just double checking and having represented on the county Burton Joyce for many years, I know the problems are around there and it can suddenly go from nothing, like, you know, floods dirt, but, you know, into serious flooding. But thanks for that, Fran, and we'll look forward to, well, the sun's out now. There is one leak I could report or one flooding, and that's in the council chamber. I do note there's a bucket there, so, and the plaster's looking very severely wet above it. So Mike, I don't know if anybody's had a look at that, but obviously somebody's put a bucket there. But it might be somebody's done their usual target practice on top of the, on top of the roof outside. But anyway, with that, thanks for everyone and see you again soon, thank you.
Thank you, Leader.
Thank you.
Thank you.